Okay, good evening. Today is Thursday, March 20th, 2025. We are the North Adams School Committee and we are here at City Hall, 10 Main Street in the council chambers. Pursuant to the Chapter 20 of the Acts of 21, this meeting is conducted in person and we are allowing remote access for people just to watch this. In the event that we are unable to adequately access these proceedings, we will provide a transcript and minutes of this meeting. We will start with a roll call. Elkinberg?
Here.
Chamberlain? Let's see, Cody? Donnis?
Here.
Jacobs?
Here.
Sukie?
Here.
Tom Kowits?
Here.
Maxi, present. Thank you. The item on our agenda is, next is item number three, to talk about the superintendent search process. As most of you will remember, the school committee appointed a search committee to lead the selection process for our next superintendent. We opted for an external search rather than an internal one to ensure we found the most qualified and well-suited candidate. Our goal was to maintain a transparent and open process. The search committee carefully reviewed 13 resumes and conducted virtual interviews with five candidates, including one superintendent, three assistant superintendents, and one principal with superintendent licensure. Following a thorough evaluation, the search committee unanimously recommended Dr. Timothy Callahan as the sole finalist. The committee was unable to recommend a second candidate as Dr. Callahan's qualifications, experience, and interview performance significantly outshone the others. Additionally, his deep understanding of our school system and firsthand experience within the district were seen as invaluable for long-term success, as valuable for long-term success. The school committee carefully reviewed the recommendation and humanistically agreed with that. However, to comply with open meeting laws which require at least two candidates to proceed onto the next level of consideration, the current search process must be nullified. After consulting with MASC executive director and our attorney, it has been advised that at this meeting, the school committee formally void the search, vote to conduct an internal review, and publicly interview Dr. Callahan. After the interview with Dr. Callahan, the committee will decide whether to enter into contract negotiations with him or reopen the search. So with that, I would like to propose a motion to dissolve the current search committee and vote that the process be voided or nullified, that we conduct a review of internal candidates, which is only Dr. Callahan, and we publicly interview Dr. Callahan during tonight's meeting.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
TR, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, this will be a roll call roll. Elkinberg?
Yes.
Chamberlain, have you joined us?
Not yet.
Okay. Donnis?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Sukie?
Yes.
Tom Kowits?
Yes.
Maxi, yes. Thank you. So with tonight's interview, we welcome Dr. Callahan. The school committee, along with student representative Jane Bergeron, will ask you approximately 20 questions. It's going to be a long night. We kindly ask that you limit your responses to five minutes to ensure there is time for any follow-up questions from the committee. The school committee sought input from the community regarding questions and topics they would like to explore with you. We received 23 questions, which have been integrated into some of the committee's questions, and they may also stand alone, and the school committee will identify this is a community question. So please note, we will be, we won't be taking questions from the audience during this session, and that we will be using as much information from the community questions as possible. So with that, Dr. Callahan, are you ready to start?
I'm ready.
Okay. So I'm going to ask you your first question. We understand that you are a finalist in Central Berkshire. What made or motivates you to seek the position of superintendent here in North Adams, and what makes you believe you are the right fit for this role?
I've dedicated my life to North Adams Public Schools. I started here in 1998 as a substitute teacher at Drury High School. Previous to that, I was the training store manager of KB Toys. And I quit that job because it wasn't fulfilling me, and I didn't know what that meant at the time, but I knew that teaching was something that was more interesting. And so I was brought on board as a sub at Drury, and I quickly learned that it was exactly what I wanted to be doing with my life. And so in 1998, 1999, I taught English literature to high school students at Drury High School without walls. Drury had no walls at that time, which was an experience. And it became so apparent that working with students, helping students achieve their goals, working with my colleagues, just focusing on education as a way of life was so meaningful to me in a way that I had not felt in my previous career. And I've been in North Adams Public Schools ever since, as a teacher for 13 years, as a director of curriculum instruction, team leader of English at the high school level. I was director of technology for the district for a period of time, assistant principal principal at Drury High School, and now assistant superintendent, working closely with Dr. Barbara Malkus. And to me, what's so special about North Adams is that we're small enough to be able to try creative things and collaborate to improve the outcomes for our students. But we also, we are able to leverage opportunities that exist to us because of the grants that are available to us and the fact that we can bring in innovative ideas. And so one of the things that I didn't realize as a young educator in North Adams was how unique that situation was. I was on grant committees, I was on various teams and projects. Even as a classroom teacher, we were trying innovative methods to, way before AI as we know it today, use online scoring of essays in an English classroom to provide feedback to students. We're talking 20 years ago, we were looking at that level of technology and trying that out because of a grant from DESI. And I was involved with those committees, I facilitated many of those teams and committees, and I grew my leadership abilities as a teacher. And in talking to colleagues from across the state and certainly Berkshire County, they didn't have those opportunities. If they were a classroom teacher, they learned the curriculum and implemented the curriculum. But here in North Adams, we had so many innovative opportunities. So even before I was a team leader, I was facilitating and leading that kind of creative work to improve the outcomes for our students. And let me comment on the Central Berkshire thing. I was a finalist in Central Berkshire for their superintendency. I withdrew after the North Adams Search Committee had put my name forward. There's an attraction to Central Berkshire for me because my parents graduated from O'Connor High School, my cousin Tommy was the longtime principal of O'Connor High School, and I was actually offered the job as Nescus principal the same summer that I was offered the job as Drury High School principal. And on all of those occasions, I was interested in connecting with what they had to offer, but my heart was always here, by far. My heart is here, this is what matters to me, this is the work that matters to me. So I declined that Nescus offer. Funny story about that situation. My son, who was a ninth grader at Pittsfield High School at the time, I asked his opinion. I was like, I've dedicated my life to North Adams, is this a good, should I make a switch? What would be your thinking on that, young ninth grade son of mine? And he really is a thoughtful kid. Now he's going to MCLA and actually trying to become a middle school math and science teacher. But he said to me, finish what you started. And that was really powerful, and it made me proud that he said that. And it, it's true, finish what I started. I've been working on many of the initiatives in North Adams since, if not 1998, since 2009, when I stepped into the director of curriculum role. The pieces of the puzzle that I have helped to put into place are what led to our early college programming, our internship opportunities, our focus on increased instructional relevance and rigor, our use of the director of curriculum role to improve instructional quality, and so many other grant opportunities that I've been actively a part of. I want to see it through and I want to finish my career here in North Adams.
Thank you, Dr. Callahan. Mr. Sukie?
My question, Dr. Callahan, is a community question. The question is, stepping into a leadership role without outside experience means you'll be working with colleagues who are once your peers. How do you plan to navigate these existing relationships while establishing yourself as a leader and making difficult decisions when necessary?
Yeah, that's been the homework of my career in North Adams. I began as a colleague to so many people. I was in the teacher corps with them, and then I became a team leader, then I became director of curriculum, then I became a principal. And all of the relationships that I built as a colleague helped me maintain those relationships while I was their supervisor, but I was also able to maintain those professional boundaries. And that's been really important to me. And anyone who knows me, anyone who works with me, I think, would say that I am extremely professional and extremely compassionate and build strong relationships regardless of what level we're working at, whether we're compatriots at the same level, whether I'm a supervisor. But I also make sure to hold that line firm, and if there is a violation or if there is a teacher who is underperforming, that we follow the correct protocol. At one point, when I was principal, one of my longtime colleagues, who I was a teacher with, who started around the same time as me, was not performing as well, and we ended up having to go through a full evaluation process and a specialized plan for this educator. And it was challenging because I think he didn't expect me to follow through on that, but we did together. It was a collaborative effort. We improved his performance, he was able to be a successful teacher, but I didn't want any doubt that there was an expectation. There was an expectation of performance, meeting student needs, and I will follow all of the laws and regulations to make sure our kids are getting what they need, while at the same time building really positive collaborative relationships. And the way that I lead is highly collaborative. So if you've seen me lead at any level, you know that it's not just me alone. I have a team with me. I build the capacity of that team through specific strategies, using Kanban and Agile workflow strategies to make sure we have a common vision and common action steps toward that goal. But it empowers the team to be part of the decision-making process. So it's collaborative, but the expectations are high, and by working together, we can achieve more than we could accomplish alone. But at the same time, if there's a line that is crossed, if there's some kind of violation, I have no problem stepping in and making sure it's taken care of.
Thank you. We'll turn it over to Ms. Bergeron.
What is your vision for the school district and what are your priorities? As you prepare for your superintendency, how would you develop your entry plan for your first few weeks, months, and years?
Well, since I've been assistant superintendent, I've actually either facilitated or co-facilitated all of the district leadership team meetings and all of the writing of the district improvement planning. So we currently are in year one of a three-year strategic plan, so the big answer to that question is we would continue what we've already started. So we've begun our three-year plan, we have two more years to see it through. Our main priorities are the ones that we have elevated for the past few years. Number one, high academic expectations for all students, implementing the curriculum with integrity, so students are getting what they need to be ready for college and career. That remains priority number one. The action steps might differ and be adjusted year to year, but that's the priority and we're sticking with that. Priority two is meeting the needs of all students, and that includes providing interventions and support, social, emotional learning, mental health supports, but also academic supports, and really identifying where student gaps are, and working with the school-based leaders and the school-based teams to close those gaps and make sure those students are on track to be able to engage successfully in the classroom. So that remains priority number two. And priority three is about equity, equity of access and equity of outcomes, ensuring that our learners and our teachers, or primarily our learners, have the access to the programs and the resources that they need to be successful, and reducing the barriers, eliminating the barriers that would prevent students from accessing those opportunities. A quick example of that would be the way we've eliminated barriers to advanced coursework at Drury High School. There used to be prerequisites, there used to be summer reading. We eliminated all that, we found our scores and our engagement in those classes went up, our results went up because we removed barriers that were preventing certain students from accessing those classes. So I really think my record speaks for itself on that, but that's a really important piece of what I would prioritize. So my plan coming into the year would be to coordinate our district leadership retreat over the summer, ensure that we are establishing within our district leadership team a clear vision for the next two years based on our strategic plan and what we can accomplish in one year next year with the leadership structures that remain in place. We still have to have the budget finalized, and we have to see how everything shakes out with who ends up where and exactly what roles we have. We're looking good, we think we can maintain many of the positions that we have going into next year. But based on that, in that district leadership team retreat, we work collaboratively to say, what are we getting done in September, what are we getting done in October? And we kind of backtrack it from June to say, where do we want to be by the end of the year? How will we accomplish those goals month by month? And that's how we're able to figure it out. So I can't say exactly what the first 90 days will hold because that's a collaborative effort with the leadership team. But I know a major priority will be making sure that some of the misalignment that's already been identified is aligned. Special education will fall more closely in line with the teaching and learning department, for a better word. Right now, they're separate departments. My role as assistant superintendent, I don't oversee special education at all. I like to rearrange it so that whoever comes in as assistant superintendent is overseeing the curriculum side and the special education side to make sure there's alignment, and that what we're doing for looking at data, looking at student work, ensuring that students are getting the resources they need to be successful are integrated between special education and general education and not a completely separate process, which it often feels because the laws for special education are so rigorous, it causes people to go down a wormhole trying to figure out how to meet those expectations, but that misaligns it from what the day-to-day teaching and learning looks like. And I want to bring that alignment more closely together and follow up on, we had a DMG group report last year that was conducted, and we have action steps in that report, recommendations. So I'd like to follow up on those recommendations and see them through next year, and that will be one of my main action steps in 2025, 2026.
Thank you. I want to answer Ms. Donis.
Thank you. This is another community question. How would you approach bringing mindful and sustainable change to our district? What strategies would you use to assess needs, gain stakeholder buy-in, and ensure successful implementation?
Yeah, I answered the stakeholder buy-in part first. We were required by law to submit a new Student Opportunity Act plan last year, which is a three-year plan from 2024 to 2027. We don't necessarily receive much funding from the Student Opportunity Act, it's actually bundled into our Chapter 70 funding, but we're still required to submit a plan. And rather than having it be just a wasted time in getting information for the sake of submitting a plan that very few people are going to read, I was able to use that time and that idea that we're soliciting stakeholder buy-in to write this plan to solicit stakeholder input about the general direction of the district and what they'd like to see. So we reached out, we conducted surveys with families and with teachers, actually all staff at the schools, with yourselves as school committee members, and students. And by a mile, what they identified as their two priorities for what they want to see in our district going forward are two primary topics. And I didn't fudge this data, this is what they came up with. Number one, well-being of students and social, emotional learning, and mental health supports in the schools, which aligns exactly to one of our three district priorities. And then the second priority identified by our stakeholders overwhelmingly was ensuring high expectations for student learning and the implementation of effective curricula, which aligns to our primary goal for the upcoming year and the next two years. So that stakeholder input informed those decisions that are being made, and that's the kind of process that I'd like to continue to replicate and check in and update our reporting and data to the community and say, here's where we are. We said we were going to do these things, we're going to improve these things, we'll put these things in place. How are we doing? Where are we in that process? And then solicit additional feedback on tweaks and revisions. The world has changed a lot since the pandemic. I was a pandemic principal, I was principal before the pandemic, during the pandemic, and after the pandemic. So I was able to see those changes. And I do know that the priority around social, emotional learning, and mental health supports radically shifted due to the pandemic and the after effects of the pandemic. So I know that remains a major focus of the community. So that would be continuing to motivate what we're doing. But I also know that academic expectation is still really deeply rooted in where we want to be and how we want to end up for our students. And I'll talk more, I'm sure, in other questions about the portrait of graduate competencies and our early college programming, but building the steps from pre-kindergarten all the way through elementary school up until the high school, so students are academically ready for those engaging opportunities for college and career are the things our community wants as well. And so I think we've heard that input, but we want to continue to make sure they're looped in and continue to refine our practices and our plans based on what they have to contribute.
Thank you. Mr. Elkinberg?
Thank you. Another community question, Dr. Callahan.
All right.
I love the beginning of this. In addition to accountability data?
My favorite.
What do you believe truly exemplifies a successful district? And what metrics would you use when developing an equitable and effective system for monitoring and reporting on continuous improvement in our district's public schools?
Yeah, I'll talk about accountability data because it's in addition to, not in place of. Accountability data as used in Massachusetts is deeply flawed, and my doctoral dissertation was about principal actions in relation to Massachusetts State Accountability. So it's something I studied pretty intensively. One of the problems with accountability data, the way Massachusetts determines it, is the ranking of the school is based almost exclusively on MCAS scores. They'll say it's not, they'll say there's other indicators, but one of those other indicators is student growth percentile, which is based on MCAS score, so it's the same thing. The problem with that is, and I did some analysis recently for a presentation at Northern Berkshire Community Coalition at the forum, of the 626 standards measured at the high school level, just nine through 12, 626 standards, only 19% are measured on the MCAS. So what are 81%? And of the 19% that are measured, they're not the ones that our community says are the most important, because when we compare it to the portrait of graduate competencies, and we look at prepared individual, and we look at global citizen, and we look at effective communicator. Sure, there's a writing portion on the MCAS, but there's not a speaking portion on the MCAS, there's not a listening portion on the MCAS, there's nothing about being an effective collaborator. So our portrait of a graduate competency is in North Adams Public Schools, which we have created in alignment with Berkshire County Portrait of Graduate Competencies in our partner schools across the county. That's what our stakeholders say matters the most. Our employees are saying it, our colleges are saying it, our parents are saying it, our students are saying it, that's the stuff we want to get better at, but the MCAS doesn't measure most of that stuff. So I do see a deep flaw there, and the MCAS is directly correlated to community wealth, which is a problem. So your Zillow rating and your Great Schools score, when you look up a house on Zillow, is largely based on how 16-year-olds do in May of their sophomore year, because that is determining the rating on the Great Schools website and the Zillow website, which is wildly out of whack and not actually a measure of the quality of the school. So I'd like to see other measures. I certainly like to see advanced coursework, which is part of the configuration of accountability, but it's a tiny portion. And the way we think of advanced coursework is we think of students actually completing college courses. Advanced coursework in the DESI side means something much broader. We have a newer view. We're saying, no, you get the college credits. And we're expecting all students at Drury High School to achieve college credits before they graduate because we know we can prepare them for that level. So for us, what's really important to measure the quality of a school is how well all of the students are performing on measures outside of MCAS, in addition to MCAS. MCAS can be useful in some ways, but it shouldn't be used for accountability. I'd also like to see a lot more survey data being used to determine how do people feel? How do students feel about their experience in school? And we actually collect student survey data, starting in grade three through five, and then again, six through 12. Teacher satisfaction survey data, how do they feel? We've collected some of that data. In fact, we did a professional development session at Brayton today about staff morale and how they're coming together from the three schools to meet the needs of pre-K through two students. So that kind of data and that kind of feedback, I think, helps to give you the fuller portrait. I'd also like to see more showcase events at Drury High School. We have two Portrait of Graduate themed showcases, project-based learning showcases. You saw some of the project-based learning work at a recent school committee meeting with the students who had presented actually at the national level at a Massachusetts conference. So I'd like to see that being part of the measure of a school. And one thing I'll say to community members, because sometimes you hear, like, our schools are underperforming, right? Which is, I mean, that's because No Child Left Behind in 2001 said we're going to start designated underperforming schools based on a metric that's tied to community income. So when they say our schools are underperforming, they're basing it on a flawed metric. North Adams as a city is in the fifth percentile of community wealth in the state, so whenever we overperform the fifth percentile, we're overperforming. And I want people to come in and see that overperformance, and I want people to come in and visit our schools. When I was principal at Drury High School, and someone would say, oh, I heard Drury is like this, or I heard Drury doesn't have high test scores. I would say, come on in and see what we're doing. And I would take them on tour, and we'd visit some classrooms, and they would see the students in action, and they would be like, oh, I didn't realize it was like this, because the test scores, the special MCAS test scores, do not reflect the reality of our educational system.
Thank you. I'll bounce it back over to David.
Thank you. Another community question, Dr. Callahan. What measures will you take when addressing the negative impact technology has had on our students, in particularly the elementary grades? How would you go about looking at a technology plan for our future that addresses our technology needs while balancing the concerns it presents?
Yeah, the focus on elementary adds a twist to it. As you know, for secondary level, we changed the cell phone policy, electronic device policy, and I was quoted in Ed Week about my feelings about that, and we saw a 75% reduction in disciplinary incidents within the first three months of implementation of that. So we know that taking away that, it's a distraction engine. Taking away the cell phone, it's a distraction engine and a harassment device, both. Taking that away from students during the school day significantly reduces incidents that are distracting other learning. So we've seen that evidence, and we've maintained that throughout the year. We did an analysis of Drury High School September through December, and it remained 62% down, 62% fewer disciplinary incidents from fall 2023 to fall 2024, mostly because of the cell phones no longer being allowed. At the elementary school, it's different. We're not dealing with students trying to bring cell phones to school, but we are dealing with students who are, in many ways, manifesting as if they haven't engaged with humans that often. They're engaging with the screen, or their families are engaging with the screen, and they're kind of left with their own devices, literally or metaphorically. And that is creating students who don't have what we would expect to see as first-grade social skills or third-grade social skills. Like, what we call first-grade social skills is a made-up concept, which is based on our previous experience with first graders. Society has changed since then, so we have to recalibrate what we're expecting of our first graders, but we have to explicitly teach them social interaction. So one of the things that we did with our implementation, I used to tan around in the audience, who's our math coordinator, we implemented UIC in math this year, and that was a big curriculum adoption. It was, for the first time in a long time, we not only implemented a new math curriculum in grades K through six, but we did it in a way that had active coaching and support so we could really implement it with integrity. And we also created an assessment schedule that was much more formalized than previously. In previous curriculum implementations years ago, before I was in this role, what I saw was, we would introduce the curriculum, it'd be used as a resource, but there wouldn't be that clear coaching and support, and there also wouldn't be an expectation that by November, you would have administered this assessment, and by January, you'd administer this assessment, and then we'll look at the data collaboratively and see how the students are doing with the teachers. We implemented all of that this year, and we've seen massive changes. The way it relates to technology is that a lot of the curriculum resources these days are embedded with technology or in technology. The platforms are online platforms with a physical book component, instead of a physical book component that happens to have online resources. The focus has flipped from the vendors, because that way they can get you to subscribe every year, that's how they get you. The reason that I'm bringing this up is because what we've seen, Lisa has helped coach on this, is even though the assessments are available online, the resources are available online at the earliest grades, we're not using those. We're using paper and pencil assessments, we're using paper and pencil measures. Most of the learning tasks are physical hands-on learning tasks, not tasks through the computer. So we're very aware of the fact that screen time is dangerous for our students, and we are not in the pandemic where we have to do remote learning anymore. So let's cut back on the screen time that we're forcing kids to endure during our scheduled day, and let's make sure we're providing opportunities for collaboration, opportunities for communication, hands-on learning, physical tactile learning. And we know we have to head in that direction, it's the right direction for students. In grades three through six are kind of in-between mode, more hands-on learning. And even at the high school, if you went and visited Drury High School a couple of years ago, you would have seen a lot more technology-infused lessons with laptops. Now, there's technology, but it's a lot more student collaboration, a lot more student hand-on, because we know they have to build those skills explicitly. And if we're not providing opportunities to build those skills during the school day, when are they getting those skills? Because they're not just running around and playing in the neighborhood and pick up a game of baseball, that's not real life anymore. So we have to change the way we approach those goals and those aspects of teaching and learning by giving students those opportunities during the school day.
Thank you. We'll turn it over to Ms. Bergeron again.
How would you recruit student voices from across the district in making decisions that affect them?
We have had, so far this year, one student voice summit that I know Jane participated in. The student voice summits are a great way. So if you don't know what student voice summits are, we did it at Drury High School in the fall, there's going to be a county-wide one in the spring. We plan to do it annually at Drury High School. The entire school stops and does a student voice summit simultaneously, facilitated by students. So we had 44 student facilitators, all of the students in the high school in breakout rooms. We had generated questions in advance in our collaboration with the Portrait of Graduate Countywide Schools and the county-wide version of the student voice summit we did at BCC. And then our facilitators, the 44 facilitators, identified which of those questions as a group they wanted to make sure they asked to their Drury peers. And the students ran the show in those breakout rooms, and the teachers were not allowed to talk. The teachers just took notes and wrote synthesis on the whiteboards or on the poster paper, and that was the way that the teachers could hear what the students were saying about their experiences. their experiences at Drury. And then we had some data to bring back to the school leadership team to make some changes for the future. So you may not be aware of this, because you weren't at Drury when these changes started, this was the first year of the student voice summit, but most of the changes at Drury High School are based on student voice sessions that we had at a smaller scale. So the emphasis on project-based learning came because we interviewed students, and they said, "I get A's in my class, but I do it just to get A's. I don't really care about it." And that, like, we don't want to hear that from our students who are most engaged, so we reconsidered what we were expecting of our students, and we had teachers propose 22 different project-based learning courses at Drury High School to replace some of the other more traditional courses. And we're balancing between the two. We still have traditional coursework and project-based coursework and advanced coursework. But that change was directly in response to student voice. Same thing with the use of crew and flex period. Those opportunities at Drury, every morning after period one, there's an advisory period where students are going through a social-emotional learning curriculum, sometimes in a seven-through-12 span, sometimes in a grade-level span, like 10th graders getting together. And they also have opportunities for college and career readiness, explicit instruction in that and collaboration with their peers. And we have the flex block, which is, as it's labeled, a flexible period of 40 minutes where students can make up an assignment, or work with a math teacher to get extra help, or go through a multi-day process to improve their math skills, or rehearse for the play, whatever they need to do for their particular learning. All of that was based on student voice. And so student voice has driven a lot of my professional work over the past few years. It's very exciting to collaborate with students and find out what they want, and then make those changes to see it happen. I think one of the places that we fall a little short is we don't always communicate, we don't connect the dots between, the student said this three years ago, and now here's what's in place. And so I think sometimes students say, "Well, we never see any changes," because they don't realize that what they said actually leads to those changes, because we just talk about the changes. For the younger grades, for students in grades three through six, we've also started to talk about how we can solicit more of their input. One of the students in grade five mentioned to me, "ST Math is one of our online tools for students just practicing some math skills." And we have an equivalent tool for English language arts as well. And they were saying, "Well, we like ST Math, we like practicing our math and doing those puzzles, but we already know how to read, and we already know what parts of speech are, why do we need to do the English one?" And I said, "Let's work with Ms. Chappell, who's our literacy coordinator, to actually get some input from you about what you find valuable and what you don't find valuable, so that we can actually change our implementation of that support next year to meet your real needs, not what we assume your needs are." So we're expanding our student voice down to the lower grades as well.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. This is another community question. How would you ensure a safe and supportive learning environment for students of marginalized identities, such as LGBTQ+ students and other marginalized groups, while also fostering open dialogue and freedom of thought for all students?
Obviously, in the current state of America right now, the way we're headed, this is a more controversial topic than ever. We were at a session in, we were at Bentley University last week, and it was a session that was a combination of social-emotional learning, mental health grants, grantees, we are one of them, we were awarded that grant, and we think in discipline awardees, we were awarded that grant as well. And the speaker, who's worked with us for many years, was talking about equity initiatives and meeting the needs of marginalized students, and he said, "All of a sudden, we have to kind of whisper these things, and that's not a place that feels comfortable." So we're addressing it head-on. First of all, as a district, we believe in equity, and we believe in equity of access and equity of outcomes. In any historically marginalized populations, we're going to make sure they get what they need to be successful, not just access, but outcomes. It's not about just inviting them to the party, it's making sure they're included in the party and welcomed, and they feel like they belong and can be successful. So strategic things that we have done is ensure that all of the curriculum adoption, we use an equity protocol to vet the curriculum. And we have found some things where we decided to go with one curriculum product over another one because of our vetting and our dialogue as a team to say, "Does it actually do things that we don't feel comfortable presenting? Does it marginalize or create barriers for any of our students?" So that's a process, and even though on paper, that's always been the process, we've really made that come alive. It's been a more integral part of our decision-making over the past five years, and we're sticking with it. We also are making sure that when we adopt a curriculum, that it is inclusive, not just check the boxes, but that it really meets the diverse learning needs of marginalized population, including students with disabilities, and that there are access points for them. As far as LGBTQ students, my youngest child is transgender, not binary, so I live that life of a supporter of a student who is not a cis male. And so I know that challenge, and I also know the importance of a sense of belonging. When my youngest child went off to college, every one of their roommates in the suite identified as transgender, and they said to me, "I've never felt like I belonged before." And it was, as a parent, you want to hear that when your kid goes off to college, but especially from a kid who did not have that experience in high school, I want to make sure we're able to replicate that by providing opportunities for students to work together and to learn from each other. And the way I see it, there are different opinions and different perspectives and clashing values, but when one set of values is aligned with bigotry and exclusion, that's not the set of values I will support. And I think we need to take a strong stand against those values and in favor of the values of inclusion and equity. And so those are the decisions that we constantly make and we stand by, and I think we've been steadfast in that, and we haven't wavered, and we won't waver even in this current political climate.
I appreciate that, thank you. I'm going to pass it to committee member Alkembray.
Thank you. Another community question, Dr. Callahan. In times of federal uncertainty, we touched on that. How will you ensure that students with FIVEL four plans and IEPs receive the support and accommodations they're entitled to, and can you share a specific approach or strategy to implement?
Well, we don't know, so the uncertainty is not leading to any actual changes yet, and that's important to remember and make sure that we're doing what we always have done. The funding sources may change, we don't know. The promises coming out of Washington are, "Well, we'll get more money because we're cutting through the bureaucracy." Whether that proves true or not, we know. It's really important to make sure that we realize that Massachusetts education wildly predates the Department of Education at the federal level. The first public schools in Massachusetts were in the 1600s, I think it was 1643. So we've got hundreds of years, almost 400 years, 380 years of history of education in Massachusetts. Drury High School is the 54th oldest high school in the entire country, so our North Adams history of education is far longer than whatever's happening at the federal level. The dismantling of the Department of Education will get to a point where it can't cut any deeper, because public education in America as we know it today really began in 1965 with the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, which was coming out of the civil rights era to ensure equitable access for all students, and then the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act of 1975, which ensures that students with disabilities have their needs met, and funding is provided to meet those needs. That's deeply baked into the law of the land. The Massachusetts state government also expects us to live up to those laws, so I don't think that level of resource will disappear. I think there will be barriers put in place to access some of the funding. So I think as far as where the strategic moves on our part is to stay the course, not get caught up in the swirling chaos, but realize that our students are legally protected by decades of law and education, and the services that we provide should not change because of the whims of someone in a certain seat of power. And so the strategies are to do what we've been doing, make sure we're doing them intentionally and strategically, and if we do have to eliminate a position or two, ensure that we're prioritizing the most important set of skills and standards completely aligned to our assessments in general education, so that we're not, there's no redundancy built into the system, let's say. And I think there are areas where there may be some redundancy, because we've got two parallel systems happening now, and we're trying to assess students in different ways. There's assessments to make sure they're making progress towards their IEP goals, and then there's assessments for their report cards, and those things may or may not be communicated with each other, and there may be different people involved. So let's streamline that and make sure that we don't have extra work being done in case we have to thin down some of our ranks and make sure that we're meeting the needs of our students with fewer staff members. I deeply hope it doesn't get to that, because right now, we're pretty thin to begin with, and our students have a lot of needs, and we want to meet those needs. But I do think we have to remember that the whims of the current president do not dictate what decades of law actually say.
Thank you very much. Turn it over to member Tomquitz.
So this is another community question. How will you navigate the potential challenges of budget uncertainty related to federal funding for special education, as you just talked about, title programs, et cetera? And can you provide an example of how you will adapt to funding fluctuations while ensuring continued support for students?
Yeah, we'll have diminished support if the funding is diminished. That's just the bottom line, unless the city is able to find a magical pot of money at the end of the rainbow to increase the contribution, there's just not more funding available. What we do aggressively, you've seen it, you've seen my work, you've seen what we do in the district, we aggressively pursue competitive grants. We currently have an opioid trust grant pending that would provide additional support. It would be a $500,000 grant over the next three years. We applied for that in the spring, we haven't heard back, but those type of opportunities are things that we are already strategically trying to put into place and reach out to those agencies that could provide that level of funding if we do end up having diminished funding for support from the federal government. There will be programs that are cut if federal funding is cut. The 21st Century After School and Summer Program is almost entirely funded by federal funds coming out of the Department of Education. There is no way the district can take on those costs. So the reality is, our amazing programs that have been created, that have been aligned to our student learning needs at all three schools, now, this is the first time we've had programming at all three schools, and it's really good. We can't offer that anymore. We might be able to offer a diminished version at Brayton for the younger students, we have prioritized them, partially because most of that funding still comes from the state level, not the federal level, but that's just the reality, is that we'd have to diminish those services, so we would have to cut from the outside first, our extra programs that are outside the school day, that's the first place we'd have to look. I wouldn't want to cut a single one, because those are vital to our learning process. Internally, it's going to be very difficult to cut much deeper. We've already done a restructuring, we closed a school last year, we've gone from three elementaries to two. Our class sizes at the current schools are between 20 and 24. It's not even a matter of increasing class size, the capacity of the classrooms can't hold 30 or 40 students, and then how do you find educators who are willing to work under those conditions? So the reality of the budget potential crisis is that we would have to really streamline what we're doing and focus on the school day activities as much as possible, and look for inefficiencies, but there are not many, because we've been trimming and trimming and trimming over the past few years to get to the point that we're at now.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it back over to committee member Jacobs. So this question is, I hope not overly redundant to the conversation we just had, but if you did need to make significant budget cuts midstream, midyear, how would you go, what's the process you would follow to go about addressing whatever shortfalls there might be?
So Dr. Malkus and I attended an EAB training session that was about essentially pre-crisis planning. So rather than like school safety crisis stuff, like not those kind of dangers, but more fiscal dangers, and a lot of it is common sense, but it's also helpful for a professional to say, "Here's how you should approach that." And so what they said was, you have to have not necessarily your plan in place, but you have to know your process for the planning. And so that's, we haven't gotten to that stage yet, because we just went to that level. But the process would involve some version of, who's your team that you're going to assemble? So if it is, if 21st Century funding gets cut, do we bring the whole district leadership team together to figure out what pieces of it we can maintain, and which community partners could maybe sustain one activity? Or is it just a conversation with Dr. Pecor, who coordinates the 21st Century program, and the superintendent, and myself? So we have to determine that. There would be a team. The extent of the team would depend on the severity of the cut. If it involved school day cuts, we would have the principals involved. The principals are part of the district leadership team already, we meet every two weeks for strategic planning and professional development, so that would just be something that we build in. So I think our strategy is having some of those conversations in advance about not only how we'll approach it, but if, what is the first layer we'd have to shed first? And how deep could we reasonably go before we have to close the schools? And we'd have to have those conversations upfront as part of our safety, our fiscal safety planning. So that's something that I would like to see happen. It's very difficult to pull off now, MCAS season is upon us, there's a lot of principals tied up with testing, but between now and the end of June, in our first session of our district leadership retreat, doing some of that fiscal safety prep work to make sure we know who our team is, how's the plan going to evolve, who's going to make the decisions, and then the communication side of it, how will we communicate it to the staff, to the students, to the parents? Because it very well could be a reality in some of those ancillary areas that are not within the school day. If it cuts to the school day, then we bring the school committee on board too, and the school committee is involved with those conversations. If there's cuts that really change the programming that we can offer during a school day, you'd have to be collaborative participants in that, in that decision-making.
Can you elaborate on what you're suggesting a school day change might look like?
Well, for example, yeah, let's say that our funding was cut so significantly that we had to not offer pre-K anymore. Pre-K, for example, is not something we're required by law to offer. We get grant funding to fund a portion of it, but not 100% of it. So I don't think that's a decision we would make without school committee, but we would say, with this shortfall, we could cut pre-K programming, we could have one pre-K section, we could cut athletics, like, what would be the direction? And we definitely want the school committee to weigh in, because those are significant cuts that affect a lot of people, and those are the kind of cuts that, once you cut, it's hard to get back, and we don't ever want to have that happen, and so we want your support and collaboration about how we go forward with such significant changes to the district.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and I appreciate the extra insight into what you were talking about. I'm going to pass it to committee member Sukie.
Thank you. How would you keep your school committee informed? In particular, what is your strategy around issues that you are, that your responsibility, but where the school committee may have an interest?
I definitely would have, in the past, a lot of blind spots around that, because I wouldn't know. I wouldn't know what the school committee necessarily would find interesting or not interesting. Even when I was principal of Drury, the school committee did feel a couple extra layers removed. I would go to the school committee meetings, I'd see what you talk about, but I wasn't part of Policy Subcommittee. I wasn't part of other conversations, other Finance and Facility Subcommittee. Now that I'm more on the inside, I do see the types of things that you personally are interested in knowing about and being updated on, but also what bubbles up to your attention that you then send texts about and say what's going on. So I have that sense, I have that context of the type of things. And I know that one of the things that tends to get people fired up is the perception that we're taking something away. So any conversations about change, we would inform you of, if we're removing 21st Century programming, we would loop you in on that. If we're making a significant change to the schedule, we would loop you in on that. And we would make sure that you're updated on those things that you're likely to hear about from your constituents. I also know there was questions and challenges about the valedictorian and sedutorian at Drury High School. I know that bubbled up and became a community interest, and what I think that was really about is the perception of lowered standards for the students. And so when there's a perception of lowering standards, people are like, "That's not okay. I don't want my child to go through a school system with lowered standards." My perspective on that situation was that had nothing to do with lowered standards. In fact, our standards at Drury High School are significantly higher now than they were when I first started, and significantly higher than when I became the leader in 2009. I'll throw this out there, because it relates, and you might not get a specific question about it, but in 2009, 10% to 20% of our students at Drury High School were dropping out, and 40% of the students who remained were in designated non-college classes. That was the Drury High School I began my leadership work at in 2009. We radically changed that approach, and now all students at Drury High School are in college-ready classes, and the majority complete college credits before they graduate. So I think communicating a lot of that to the public upfront about what we're actually doing, I think can minimize those concerns, and I think that's where sometimes we're short-sighted. We communicate it internally, we know what's going on, we put out our brochures, and we do our press releases, but people who went to Drury 20 years ago assume they know what Drury is like, or assume they know what the North Adams Public School is like, and it's just not like that anymore. So we have to communicate proactively, but then also be aware of these things that are likely to bubble up and make sure that you're looped in to why these decisions were made. And I can assure you, they'll always be made with the students' best interest in mind, but that's not always clear on the surface.
Thank you. Turn it over to Mr. Alkembray.
Thank you. The roles and responsibilities of school committee and superintendent are sometimes very clear and sometimes ambiguous. For example, budget approval versus budget implementation, personnel policy and finance versus personnel administration, or even dealing with parents and teachers with concerns or complaints. Can you describe some situations where these roles and responsibilities have challenged you, and how would you work to address them if you were the superintendent? There's a really good story.
There's a really good resource for leadership around these issues. And it's a classic leadership tax. It's the Bowman and Deal four frames of leadership. And so you've got your structural frame, your human resources frame, your symbolic frame, and your political frame. There's like four quadrants on the diagram. Until I was principal of the high school and then began my graduate program, for my doctoral program, I had heard of those, but I didn't really internalize those, those approaches. And what I found, and what I've trained the other principals in as well through our principal mentoring program, is that every problem fits into one of those four quadrants. And you have to realize which quadrant it fits in, and sometimes it overlaps multiple. So, for example, sometimes these things, you think it's a structural problem. Like, the program is not in place, and that's why people are mad. But it might be a symbolic problem. They're not mad because the programs in place or not in place. They're mad because there's a perception that Huzek is doing better than us on that thing, and they don't like to lose to Huzek, because that has symbolic meaning to them. So I've been much better at honing my skills in the symbolic and political realm. Working with, if you've ever worked with Barbara Malkus, she spends a lot of time in the political realm. And so she is a master of the political realm. And that's something, as a, as a teacher, you're barely engaged with that on a community level. As a principal, you're, you're far more in the hot seat in the political realm, but not to that level. Not to, let's make sure that we're working with Secretary of Education Tutwiler, who we went out to Athol to see a couple of weeks ago to talk about our innovation program. That level of the political implementation. So as superintendent, I feel unusually equipped to do all those things that have ambiguity, because I've been honing those skills, I've been practicing them in the community and with state and local leaders. But also I've been working with Barbara Malkus, who really has been, and she was superintendent of the year last year for a reason. She really knows that stuff inside and out, and she has worked closely with me, not only since the day I became assistant superintendent, but since the day I became principal, to build those skills within me and put me in situations where I would, I would become better at navigating all of those complexities.
Thank you. Member Tom Quitz.
So what has been your experience working with the school committee? And how do you see the role of the superintendent as the chief executive officer, reporting to a committee that is, in fact, a municipal legislature for schools and leading the district? A lot of words there.
Right. I work with her all monthly, sometimes more than monthly at subcommittee meetings. But I also know, in addition to those roles, the superintendent is the synthesizer in chief. You have to take all of the stuff that comes from state requirements, federal requirements, local needs, what's going on in the schools, and synthesize it in a way that makes sense to people that we see once or twice a month, and then can be communicated to the outside audience. So I think that's a really important part of the role, is being able to synthesize what is most important. And whether that's the superintendent presenting that information, or as historically happened in North Adams, the superintendent elevates other voices within the district to present that information, provide context. I think those are really important strategies to keep you in the loop. I serve at the role of the school committee. I understand my role as superintendent is I work for you, and you have entrusted me to lead the district on its educational journey. But ultimately, the policy decisions rest with you, budget approval rests with you, my evaluation rests with you. So I understand that. And I'm incredibly heartened to know that the values you have deeply align with the values of the district and my own personal values. And so that makes that work additionally satisfying. But it means we can accelerate our, our growth and improvement in the future as we align toward those common values and goals.
Great, thank you. I will pass it over to committee member Donnis.
Thank you. What are the core values that drive you as an educator? And what core values would you want to see in the staff that you are going to hire? And what would you, as superintendent, put into place to help recruit highly qualified teachers who want to work here while also retaining our wonderful current educators?
As I mentioned in my application packet, the values that I've identified that are their most core to me are collaboration, equity, and creativity. I didn't know those were my values when I started teaching. Didn't, didn't occur to me to do a values reflection. But it has been apparent, one of the things that I'm most proud of learning early on when I started teaching at Drury was I became aware of inequities and barriers that were put in place. And so I talked about the percentage of students that were in certain classes or not in certain classes. When I was teaching comprehensive ninth grade English, which was a designated non-college course, and my curriculum for that class included Romeo and Juliet, which, as an English major, I was a part of. It was a two-page summary of Romeo and Juliet. That was what was in the curriculum. And so my collaboration, equity, and creativity values were tested, because I was going to teach a two-page summary of Romeo and Juliet to, like, we can, we can actually learn Romeo. Any students can be taught Romeo and Juliet, we can learn that together. And so I added the real Romeo and Juliet into the curriculum. And of course, the students were highly engaged in learning about Elizabethan drama and the teenage angst of Romeo and Juliet. But it was all about how I handled that creatively, how I realized that it was an inequitable situation that those students were in, and how I collaborated with my colleagues, but also with the students to build a better outcome for them. And one of the, as I grew as a teacher, they moved me from class, I actually moved up with the students. So I went from ninth grade to 10th grade, and then I eventually taught 11th, 12th grade. But one of the students who was in that class, that comprehensive class, moved to college prep and then to honors, and then I had her in advanced placement literature senior year. And so I saw the power of believing in students, holding them to high standards, and teaching them the skills and making sure that they were ready. So I've embodied those values as a teacher. When I became a school leader, we removed the barriers, the inequities to advanced placement completion. We removed the barriers to advanced coursework, as I mentioned before. Instead, we reached out to students and said, you can take these more challenging classes and we'll help you. And it worked. If you've read my application packet, you saw we went from one AP test taker in English to hundreds of AP test takers. That wasn't by accident, it was intentionality to dismantle inequitable systems creatively and collaboratively. As a leader, I bring that to my team. I work with the curriculum team upstairs. And we have our bi-weekly meetings where we collaborate on what progress are we making towards the district improvement plan? Who's doing what? What help do you need? Is this blocked? What can we do to get rid of this block that's preventing you from completing this? How can we help each other achieve that? And a lot of those solutions require creativity and different approaches. And so I look for that in my team. I embody that in my work and everything I do. And when we try to reach out and recruit more educators, one of our most successful techniques is just the excitement that we share when we go out to conferences or when we go to Burke 12, we have a Burke 12 event tomorrow where we're talking about the Student Voice summits and the Portrait of a Graduate. And when we go to conferences and share our project-based learning, we share that with other educators. And then they say, oh, I'd love to work at a school like that. And we try to get them connected. It's tough to get people to relocate out here. It's a tough sell. But that's the kind of thing that we have to do, is make the North Adams Public School a place that is incredibly invited. And regardless of if those are your exact values or not, you know it's a place where, as a professional, you can be creative, you are collaborated with, and you are supported, and there's not barriers in your way or the way as the students. Actually, we ran a professional development session at Brayton today. I had a busy day. I was running a professional development session at Brayton. We broke out into five groups. I was facilitating one group. And one of the staff members is actually new to us this year. She's a permanent sub at Brayton. And she, we were having conversations, we were doing a community building circle, talking about their experiences this year and challenges that they were overcoming. And she said, I haven't worked in a school system like this since the 90s, when I was at Smith College and I was in their lab school. Like, this is the first district I've worked in since where it feels like you all care about each other, you care about the students, and you're working towards the common good. And she says, it's so refreshing. And to hear that from an outsider who came into Brayton, and Brayton had some challenges this year, it just shows that we're on the right track with what our values are and how we're advertising them for people who join us.
Thank you. Thank you. Great. Mayor?
Thank you. Great segue into my question, Dr. Callahan. The transition and merger of our elementary students have been challenging for faculty, staff, and families. Students went from smaller classes to larger class sizes. How would you address concerns about class sizes while ensuring that teachers receive the necessary support from staff to effectively meet students' needs? What strategies would you use to balance resources and advocate for both teachers and students?
One of the things that we learned in the session today, and I don't want to betray any confidentiality, because it was supposed to be a session where people were kind of hearing things that were, that were working through this year. But one of the things that came up was, if you recall, a year and a half ago, when we had first started talking about, we might have to close the school, like, is it going to be this year? Is it going to be next year? The model was Graylock is going to combine with Brayton as a pre-K through six school, and Colgrove is going to remain the same until the new building was built. That was like thrown out there as a possibility. What we didn't realize is how much that actually ended up leading to some resentment, because that wasn't what happened. And the teachers thought that's where things were headed. And even though it was communicated well in advance to the end of the school year, they really felt a sense of loss when they got split up and when they broke off. And so that came out today. So some of the challenges that we had at the beginning of the school year weren't just the behavioral challenges of the students, which, as the different groups of students came together from across the three schools, those were real, there were real behavioral challenges as they socialized. But they were also the underlying feelings the teachers had of, like, I didn't want it to be this way. I'm not really happy with how things turned out. And so that led to them, I know they expressed it to the mayor, they expressed it to me in the fall, some teachers saying, like, this is a really tough year. They used other terms to describe it, but it's a really tough year. But a lot of that was their own underlying sense that it wasn't supposed to be the way it turned out. And so I think, for example, doing what we did today helps to build that support. The professional development where they had a chance to talk through that. And it was a really cool PD session, because we did a community building circle with some prompts and some of these questions. And then we looked at some of the school-level teacher survey data that they did back in November and December. And we, we said, what do you think about this? What do you, what do you notice about the way you felt in November and December about your colleagues, about how school was going, about the students? Do you still feel that way in March? What's changed? And largely, they said, yeah, that's accurate to how we felt in November and December. But it's not accurate to how we feel now. And these kind of sessions where we can talk things through really help us come together and learn about each other. Because if you're a teacher and you're teaching second grade, you're teaching second grade. You're not, you might collaborate with your other second-grade teachers once a week at most, but you're not really interacting with the rest of the staff. And because we're hitting the ground running on day one, and also we have three professional development days at the beginning of the year, they're still moving in at the beginning of the year, so they don't really even have time to build that camaraderie. So I think that's really important. I think it's supporting them coming together. It's important to build in time for this sort of professional development. In our calendar proposals for next year, we're floating a few additional half-day professional development sessions earlier in the school year. And I know half-days can be inconvenient thing for parents, we understand that. But the reality is our teachers need time together to professionally grow, to learn and collaborate. And if we don't give them that time, then it just becomes something that they internalize as a sense of failure or being not enough. A teacher's job is overwhelming. I'm a huge fan of teachers. They do so much, we ask so much of them. I don't want them to burn out. So protecting their time, providing them with professional development collaboration, but then also protecting the integrity of the classroom. One of the pieces of the principal evaluator rubric actually talks about protecting instructional time. That's something principals are evaluated on. And that means not having a million assemblies that pull kids out of class, but also means not letting the behavior of one or two students derail instruction repeatedly. And that has been a challenge this year. And part of that is with new administrators coming together at the school level, they don't have a common reference of what they're supposed to do, and if this happens, do this, because they're creating all of that from scratch this year, and they're still navigating who's doing what. So that's work that we've been doing with our leaders at the schools. But it's important work to be done, because we want to make sure that, we don't want anybody to be excluded from class. We want all of our students to be engaged in class every day. But when a student is disrupting learning to the point that other students can't learn, we have to address that. And they have to receive consequences and interventions to improve their skills. But they can't go right back in the classroom without that stuff being done. And I think that has to be more solidified, and we have to work with our principals and school leaders to make sure that that process is actually happening, and it's not feeling like just this hamster wheel of the same problems over and over and no progress. And I think we've started to crack that nut and really make, make inroads, but that's ongoing work for us.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Callahan. This is Donna.
This is another community question. Can you describe a time when you helped boost the morale of your team or colleagues? What specific actions did you take, and what was the impact?
I was a pandemic principal. Morale was low. I don't actually remember that first year. So teachers were expected to learn an entirely new instructional platform. We actually went from Google Classroom to Canvas, which was brand new to pretty much everybody. Learned brand-new ways of teaching and engaging students with students who may or may not have been on Zoom. Then, the beginning of the school year, they were in school two days. Then another group of students were in school two days. Then there was a half-day where they were supposed to engage everybody. So that was a tough time for teachers. And I think the way I was able to get our teachers through it, because we really, I think we lost one teacher during that time who decided to quit. Everybody else stuck with it and was with us before and remained with us after. And I was really proud of that, because I was coming with my values. As much as the pandemic was terrifying, and I remember that first couple of months, just thinking like, what is actually going to happen? Like, are, are stores going to run out of things permanently? We all thought that, right? But I also knew, because it was, I don't know how I ended up stumbling upon it, but a week after we were sent home on, on March 13th in 2020, I stumbled upon the report that ended up being the seminal report that guided political decision-making for the rest of that year. And in that report, it said, hey, this pandemic is going to last for 18 months, and there will be continual openings and closures during those 18 months. And it's not something that will just be two or four weeks and then it's over. So with that, armed with that knowledge, I helped the district leadership team create their policies and procedures and communication plans to say, here's what we're doing. Because that, all of that came true. We literally were opening and closing for 18 months straight. We were not back in the building the rest of that school year. So having that knowledge gave me the confidence to plan. And one of the things that I'm also really proud of is we created a Drury schedule that year, that year of the hybrid learning, that didn't change. We created a schedule that was, that so met all of the requirements and DESI's requirements, even the changing requirements and the needs of the students, that we didn't have to change it when we got a mandate from the state, whereas a school like PHS had to change their calendar three or four times and change their, my child was, I think, in 10th grade, and all of a sudden their classes were different times of different days. We didn't have to do that. And I think that helped to maintain the morale, because there was a sense of confidence that we were learning together how to do this, how to get better, practicing instruction through an online mode or a hybrid mode. And we increased our professional development around that too, on that Wednesday day when everybody was remote. But it was also a stability, in a sense that, no, we're going to, we're going to work together to get through this, and we're not going to just keep changing. We're not going to panic and say, well, we don't know what tomorrow's going to bring. We're just going to forge ahead with our clear vision and our structures that are newly in place, because we had to change everything. And, and working together and coming together to figure out how to do that well, I think really brought a sense of morale to the team.
Can I just ask a follow-up question? So Tim, you know, we talk about the pandemic and we talk about my phone. I'm keeping time, by the way, I'm not texting. But how do you really deal with, how do you deal with that employee? You see it, because you go back and forth through our offices. An employee that just shows up in the superintendent's office and, yeah, probably should talk to the principal, but is crying in the hallway and has had a really bad day. Talk to us a little about, about your interpersonal skills. You certainly are well-studied, there's no question about that. But how do you really relate to people? Because, you know, often the superintendent stopped in the hallway, stopped in the supermarket, and even myself can relate to this, you get kind of cornered. And it's not a script, it's not a policy, it's not something that's been developed. It's in real time that we will, talk to us a little bit about the interpersonal piece of Tim Callahan.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the most attractive things actually about being an educational leader, is having those conversations and building those relationships. And I would not have known that as a teacher, because as a teacher, you're building relationships with students, so you're not thinking about those adult relationships. And a lot of times, the only interaction you have with parents is like a positive one-way message or someone who disagrees with the decision. But as principal, one of the traps I see principals fall into, and I certainly fell into it, is it's very alluring to meet principals fall into, and I certainly fell into it, is it's very alluring to meet the needs of an individual who is having a breakdown or expressing a need in front of you, whether it's a student, or a parent, or a colleague, because you feel satisfied. You feel like you're meeting their needs. And so the strategy is listening. You've got to have an inquiry mindset. You've got to listen. We actually trained some of the teachers at Brayton about this today. The inquiry, the inquiry plus the advocacy. You've got to take time to listen. You've got to find out what needs they're expressing. I know, when, when, one of the things I learned as a principal is when parents are coming at you with a strong emotion. Don't, don't read the surface. Translate it. And my internal translator says, oh, this person is expressing an emotion, and they're making a request of me. They're not using those words to do that, but that's what's going on. And I love that work. I love working with other people to find out, like, what are they really trying to express, and what are their needs, and what, how can I help them? And I've had amazing success with that, I think, because, and the reason I said it's kind of like a trap, or it's alluring, is because if you do that as principal, you're always just kind of putting out fires and dealing with emotional crises, but you can't get to the improvement plan. You can't get to the instructional leadership. And so as much as I love instructional leadership, and I could talk about accountability scores all day, like, my real interest is working with people. We're a people profession, and I care most of all about how our people are doing, how they feel about how they're doing, and how they value what we're doing together, whether it's a student, a colleague, or a parent. And that they're heard, and that their, their genuine concerns are really acknowledged. And even if we can't address them in the moment, that we're considering where they're coming from. And it might be something that they don't see until three years down the road, because it was brought up in a student voice summit, or it's a parent concern that actually changed the structure of how we did final exams. Those are the kind of things that have come up. Or it's someone who's going through a real conflict in their personal life, and they just need to talk it through. I feel like as a superintendent, as an instructional leader, we have to be there for our people, because our people is what powers everything.
Thank you. Alyssa.
Given the stress that young people face today, how can educators and a superintendent in particular support students' emotional well-being? How would you incorporate social emotional learning and anti-bullying initiatives to create a safe, supportive, and inclusive school environment in each of our buildings?
Yeah, the cell phone restriction has helped tremendously. So I mentioned that they were distraction devices, harassment machines, and that's real. And so the majority of our students have a device that if they're not using during school day, is still a big part of their life after school. So helping them regulate their own emotional responses and practicing the portion of graduate competencies around college and career readiness, specifically around communicating, like, what are their needs? Communicate your needs. Making sure that they are able to work collaboratively with their peers, building those skills explicitly during the school day at all grade levels. I mentioned examples of that previously. That's a way to combat that stuff, because that way, you're not just addressing the mental health need or the emotion the student is feeling. You're building the skills for someone who can function in environments that are stressful and uncertain. We also have really intentional social emotional curriculum implementation this year. It's not perfect by any means. We're using the Second Step curriculum, which is used for morning meetings at the early grade levels, pre-K through, well, K through two. We use Al's pals in pre-K, which is like a puppet-related social emotional learning play, play-based curriculum. It's really fun. So those are built in. And then when we get up to Cole Grove, that's where we're still experimenting. So we had access to Second Step, but a lot of teachers thought Second Step was kind of like babyish for that grade. So we're trying Wayfinder, which we learned about last summer at a conference. And Wayfinder's pretty cool, because it connects in two ways. There's a curriculum that teachers can use in morning meeting or in first-period class that has the kids' practice goal-setting and self-reflection, and the things that will build those, actually build those aspects of grit, because grit is all about high support and high expectations. It builds that within our students. The challenge is Cole Grove's still trying to figure out how to fit that into their academic expectations. But the other part of the Wayfinder curriculum is it has booster lessons. So if you want some students to work on expressing their feelings in words instead of like throwing a tantrum, there's a lesson for that, and students can practice some of the skills. And it involves a lot of reflection on the students. But you can do that for a 15-minute booster lesson with some students. And so a school adjustment counselor can deploy that curriculum that way. At the high school, we have Wayfinder, which we were thinking we would use as part of our 21st century programming for the summer and after school, to try to get that goal-setting, career readiness component, more explicitly the portion of graduate competencies, because that's something that's packaged, practice in those competencies is actually packaged in that curriculum. But it hasn't been as useful as the Leader in Me curriculum, which we're using for the crew, the crew advisory block. And so the students go through the Leader in Me, which is differentiated by grade level. And again, that's not perfect either, but it's an attempt to try to build some strategic skills in social emotional learning aligned to the portion of graduate competencies by having the kids reflect and practice and set goals, so that those are the things that the students can focus on, rather than always having to respond to emotional crises. We can respond to emotional crises. We have school adjustment counselors. We have teachers and leaders who are equipped at dealing with those. But that's not our primary job. Our primary job is to get students back into class ready to learn. So a lot of times, what we have to do in those cases is refer to outside agencies. And so like at Drury High School, we have the Connect for Success program with the Brain Center. So that's a caseload of 18 to 20 students who, their needs are not being regularly met, but they're still connected with the school, and we still want them to go to class, and so they can get case management and actual clinical support. So those are other opportunities beyond the curriculum that's embedded to meet the needs of students. But it is incredibly complicated, and we've found that just by having focus on goal-setting and having something the students are, care about. So if you think about rigor and relevance as like an X and Y axis, we want to make sure our coursework and our student learning tasks are rigorous, which means like meaningful in an academic sense, but also relevant to what they care about and where they want to be in the future. And we actually study the rigor and relevance of our courses and our learning tasks to make sure that they're improving on that axis. And we find that it's a typical example. A student who will get into trouble or try to skip period three will go to period one and two, or even go to period four. So what's the difference? What need is not being met? And a lot of it has to do with they don't feel that class is meaningful, or it doesn't challenge them enough. So we're constantly working to improve that rigor and relevance axis to really engage our students in something meaningful. And then the early colleges, a huge benefit too in that way. I was talking to an eighth grader yesterday. It was so, it was so heartwarming. I was actually covering, because Principal Kapala was out at Drury, so I had the radio, I was helping out at Drury, and there was a student who was doing an art project in the hallway. And she asked me a question. I started talking to her. And this was a student who had been long-term suspended the year before, so I know she had some challenges at the school. And she was talking to me about her career interest, and she's really interested in becoming someone who works in the medical field. And I was asking her, I said, oh, have you applied to McCann? Are you staying at Drury? Like, what's your career? And she said, I really want to stay at Drury, because I love the way that we can get college credits and be successful in college because of what is offered here. And this is an eighth grader who had not previously engaged in school successfully, had the awareness that that was something she wanted to achieve, and that Drury could help her achieve it. And just the change in her conduct and behavior this year, because she sees that goal, has been transformative.
And can you speak to any anti-bullying initiatives specifically that maybe you've seen be beneficial?
Yeah, we, we have an anti-bullying plan. And one of the things in, in our department, our communications team as part of the curriculum department, we put together the anti-bullying video, which involves student voice, because we have the student narrate that. And we worked with a vendor named Dave Cartoonin, who did the animation for it. That's a really important video, because that video succinctly to students, to parents, and to staff, shows the process to address bullying. It's really important to know that all the school can really do is work to try to prevent bullying through curriculum and through building relationships, but mostly respond to it. We're not causing the bullying, we're not creating the bullying. Most of the bullying, the vast majority of bullying that occurs, happens outside of school or via social media or via texting. And that's why banning the cell phones has really helped prevent that from happening during the school day on, on our school grounds. And schools are in a weird position, because if a student harasses someone else online outside of the school day, we have no jurisdiction. That's actually a police matter. Do the police want to take that on? They're not equipped to take that on either. So it's a limbo. And so we really rely on the parents to help us ensure that there are safeguards and protocols. And when we do have parents who can really collaborate with us, we see huge success. But there are also times where there are students who cross the line, and we, we get the police involved. If it's criminal harassment, where they're harassing the same child repeatedly, we want to make sure that's documented legally, and the court gets involved and says, this has to stop, because we can provide consequences in school. If it's a school-related thing, we can create a safety plan for the student. And I've created safety plans. I've helped to revise the bullying prevention plan. But the reality is that stuff is not. And we've shaded it at the school mostly, but we still have to respond to it and provide support for both the target and make sure the aggressor is learning the skills and having intervention, so that behavior is not repeated.
Okay, thank you. I will turn it over to committee member Jacobs.
Okay. So multicultural experiences are much more than just race, language, or place of origin. Tell us about your experience working with children and families who don't look like you or speak the language you do, or who do not have the economic advantages you do. How do these experiences affect the way you work?
My first published writing was in a multicultural journal in college. And I ended up marrying the editor of that journal. She is now my wife. Worked out well for me. It's a successful piece of writing. She was born in America. So my wife is a first-generation immigrant to the United States and did not speak English when she came to this country. And so I've learned a lot from her perspective, and I ended up getting connected with her through, you know, a college club. And I didn't, certainly, growing up in Leansboro, Massachusetts, I had an awareness of, of race and cultural identity, because I knew there was like, you know, mostly white people around, and like, not a lot of diversity in Leansboro. So I understood that. But then, going off to college, obviously, you're exposed to a much more diverse range of that and, and culture. But I've learned so much from her and her family, and many times in my life, especially before the kids were born, I was the only white person in a room or at an event, because it was my wife's family, and many of them never learned to speak English. So I do have that perspective, and I think that's created a lot of empathy in me. I remember a student that I worked with, probably my third or fourth year as an English teacher. And this was really helpful, because she was a student who, she was a, well, they were called ELL students back then. There must be bilingual learners now. So she was a student who spoke Spanish and English. And she was always trying to avoid class and go to the resource room to do the work, because she mostly just wanted to draw. And I called her out, and I said, I can't help you learn. I want you to, I know you can do this. I can't help you if you keep leaving my class. I want to work with you. And she didn't really believe me until I started creating projects that allowed her to do drawing as one of the alternatives. And she started to trust me. And then, that was back in a time when I did assign homework, which I, I'm not a huge believer in homework anymore, based on all the research that I've done about homework. But she would say, I can't do homework. I have to help take care of my siblings. And that was a cultural perspective that until I was in a teaching career in North Adams, like, it wasn't anything I was exposed to, and I didn't realize that. And so she, she started communicating a lot of these cultural differences as a learner to me as, as a young teacher in a way that really opened my eyes. And so I had that perspective from my wife's background and, you know, growing up with my wife. And then I had this perspective of this, this student, because there was not a lot of diversity when I started teaching at Drury. And that's just, it's continued. And I, most of my crusade to remove barriers are about those barriers of equity and access. So when I talk about my perspective on homework shifting, I know, because I've seen it, that when you have a significant portion of a grade, like, you have to go home and write an essay, and that's a, a major grade, that's inequitable, because not everybody has the same access to resources or time or space. And it's an unmonitored activity. So you don't know, like, who's getting what help and who's getting, who's not getting any help. And so I have really been conscious of removing those kind of barriers to allow access. And then, just the translation and communication, I work closely with Lizzie Whitman. Lizzie Whitman is our coordinator of, of ML Services. And she's a fantastic asset. She actually teaches at the college, and she, she trains other educators in Berkshire County about ensuring that the families are engaged and that the families are, are central. Even families who don't speak English or don't have English as their first language are brought in and using translation to include them in decision-making. She has shown me not, I, I knew it was important, but she's shown me, like, technically and tactically, how to do that. And she's put together the program guide that we use, that's like a model for other districts. And so that, those people that I've met along the way that have really opened my eyes and my perspective outside of my own inherent whiteness that I was born with, have, they've shaped the way that I think about education and think about meeting the needs of all, all lives.
So I appreciate that. I'm going to ask you a very granular follow-up. You mentioned earlier, working on developing the calendar.
Yeah.
And I'm going to share from personal family experience, that literally every year, including this one, major school events have been scheduled during the Jewish High Holidays. And I don't want to just fixate on one, but all, I want to hear how you can lead with sensitivity to all
Yeah.
the cultures and religions who have a student present in the district, even if it's only one, to be sensitive to holidays, but other, any other cultural.
Yeah. And that example is a great one that we became aware of this year, and immediately we have addressed. So it's a known issue. And we've put in protocols in place. One of the challenges why that happened is because our calendar adoption process mostly happens sort of at superintendent's office level, and then it's sent out to teachers to review. They vote on it, and then it goes to school committee. And there's not many people contributing to the development of the calendar historically. It's a small team, and then it just kind of like gets decided on. So knowing that that was a problem, and it actually led to professional development being scheduled on, on the Jewish High Holiday, we've instituted a new approach, which is that the calendar creation, and we just finished a first draft of the calendar, which is why I was referencing it, involves some thought around that to begin with, sure. But then, we've put in safeguards. So after Bobby Tassone has the draft of the calendar, she then sends it to our Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Justice Team to vet. So they vet the calendar, and they look for those conflicts and those, those barriers that might have been invisible to people who weren't paying attention, and ensuring that the calendar is inclusive and doesn't step on any of those religions in a way that would exclude either adults or students from participating. So we have specifically built that in as a new process, because we were aware that was a problem.
So I appreciate that. And for those who don't know, so the calendar is, is set for the next academic year with, when are our half-days going to be? When is our vacation going to be? I want to, I'll repeat again.
Yeah, keep doing it.
I apologize to everyone for, I don't want to belabor, but, so the first night of Passover is, is one of the shows for Drury Theater. That's not a calendar
Right.
issue, but it's still scheduling sensitivity in the district.
Yeah, so.
And often, sometimes it's been a calendar issue, like, we're going to have open houses or whatever. But sometimes it's not really calendar.
It's a different calendar, yeah.
It's still scheduling awareness and sensitivity.
Yeah, I would say, one of the things that has been a challenge is we have our district DEACH team, Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Justice Team, that is about identifying issues and addressing them. But we haven't been as successful at creating the school-based teams. So a lot of time, the school-based activity, we don't even know about it. It doesn't even come up to the district level. It's a school kind of principal and whoever's leading that particular extracurricular activity. But that's a really good point, because I was unaware of that. So what we can do is ensure that anything that involves any calendar, whether it's the school-based calendar, an extracurricular calendar, that all of that goes through the DEACH team for vetting to ensure that's not happening, because we, we don't want that. Nobody wants that. And we do have a team in place that can take that on. We just need to make sure the communication channel is, is like turned on and that people know to access it in a timely manner, because it doesn't do any good. If you're like, hey, approve this calendar. I need it by tomorrow. You've got to give a couple of weeks' notice for the team to convene and review it. But we can actually make that part of our ongoing, there can be periodic check-ins, and we can say, let's gather the calendar from the various extracurriculars in schools and make sure that we're not, we're not doing that.
I appreciate it. Thank you for addressing all of this. Anyway, but I'm going to pass it to community member Ciki.
So I have the final community question for you, Dr. Callahan. Can you share an example of a successful strategy you've used or would use to improve community and family engagement in the children's education? How do it impact student learning and overall achievement?
We have to approach it in a multifaceted way, because it can't just be the expectation that parents or caregivers come to events. We also know there are barriers that when we try to ameliorate, it doesn't actually address the root cause. So a quick example would be, when I was principal at Drury, and we had various showcases or performances, we would actually work with the, do for, to try to get some busing in some key areas around North Adams, because our, what we'd heard was that transportation is an issue. And we know that. We know that to be true. We heard it. But we didn't get many takers. And so I think there's a deeper cause there, like, maybe they didn't want to take this kind of perceived inequitable transportation. But finding more about what those barriers are, one of the things that we found was helped to engage more families helped to engage more families was online access. So having online student-led parent-teacher conferences as an option, not as a requirement, but scheduling some that were in-person, and then here's an option, you can do one remotely. That had a lot more opportunities for family engagement. Even something simple as a suspension hearing. And you might think, "Well, a suspension hearing sounds not at all engaging." But suspension hearing is engaging because the purpose of a suspension hearing is to provide due process for the child and give an opportunity for the parent to come in and meet about the situation. And what I used to do as principal is we would have suspension hearings, and we would, once we started offering them as remote options, we would get more parents to show up because many parents would just say, "Nothing," or they'd say, "Oh, suspend my kid." And we found out that was actually code for, "I can't get there." Like we found that out, right? So building a way for them to engage in that process, but then making sure that that process is, here's the evidence of what your child did. This is the rule, this is unacceptable conduct. Here's what we're going to do to provide a consequence and an intervention to build this child's skill, even if they're suspended for three days. When they come back, this is what we're gonna do to help build their skills. We're not gonna give up on you. We care about you. That's an important message to say and believe, because that's why we're here. And then end the suspension hearing and say, "Okay, let's now talk about what we're gonna do to collaborate and make this, make this situation better for this child." And so that suspension hearing is just an avenue to get the parties connected in, for a serious reason, but then to have a real meaningful relationship develop in support of a child. There was a parent when, it was actually during the pandemic because we were still wearing masks, so it was probably the second year of the pandemic. And a parent came in and he was really fired up because his daughter got into a fight after school, wasn't on school grounds, but he was really mad about this, like how could we let his daughter get attacked? Wasn't on school grounds, but we're like, "Let's keep your daughter safe." He really saw me as a threat and was really angry because he, as the daddy bear, he wanted to protect his child, totally understandably. But it wasn't until about the third or fourth time that we met, and then it was a suspension hearing. And then his tone changed from, "Don't listen to this guy, you know, he's just trying to, you know, do bad things to you," to, he turned to his daughter and said, "This guy's on your side, he's trying to help, listen to him." And it's like the repeated not giving up, framing it with, "We're, we're not gonna give up on you, don't give up on us, we're here to solve this problem." Explicitly saying that in those kind of meetings is probably the number-one way to build those relationships, in addition to events and concerts and athletic competitions where people are going to show up anyway and advertising them. And also, as a side to that, we've done a lot more with marketing. I hope you've seen that over the past few years, that we've intentionally expanded our communications department to make it more of a marketing department, to get messages out there about the events that are going on and all the great things that are happening. And we want families to show up, but really it's those one-on-one conversations, it's a phone call home. I reached out to a parent yesterday, actually it was that student who gave me some feedback about her goals for the college program, and I reached out to her parent yesterday and I said, "I had a great conversation with your daughter, it was really helpful to hear her perspective." Like those took me two minutes, but those little moments of connection are enormous at building goodwill and allowing the perception that we're out to get someone become their reality because we're not, we're here to help, we're here to work together. But there's a lot of defensiveness, and so really reaching out and building those one-on-one connections, either through email or phone calls or remind.com or literally scheduling a meeting are incredibly impactful, and that's something that we try to make sure is happening in all of our schools.
Thank you.
So just to go over what I have in my mind for the format for the rest of this meeting, is I, next I'd like to turn it back to the school committee to ask any additional questions that you may have, then go to Tim for closing comments, and then go back to the school committee for your closing comments and thoughts as to how to proceed. So my ask is gonna be to keep this next dialogue to any additional questions from the school committee or Ms. Bridgerham. Okay?
Well, go ahead. I think it's been talked around a little bit, but just to make it a singular question, you know, given that you have been with the district since 1998 in all the various roles, I'm curious about your specific thoughts around things that are in place, that you've had a hand in putting in place, that you are challenging the continuation and evolution of in the stream that it's already on versus things that in, in the role as superintendent, you might want to change from our current course?
Yeah, I'll talk about both of them separately and where they overlap. So certainly, this, this focus on rigor and relevance, even though we didn't necessarily call it that when I started doing that work as a team leader and as director of curriculum, it was about, how do we take, because at that point, 2009, the Common Course Leaders hadn't quite come out yet, but they were still state standards. And how do you take these expectations for learning at each grade level and really make sure we understand what they mean and the students are mastering that level of performance? Because up until then, if you went to school before the standards movement, which really initiated in the late eighties, but then became a national thing in the, in the two thousands, if you went to school before that, it was quite a random experience. It depended on what your teacher or your district felt like teaching and the degree to which you were proficient in that thing. So working with teachers to better understand what are the common expectations, what do we really expect as a learning progression? And then realizing that my direct influence was limited at the high school. So I learned that early on, and I worked, even as a jury-based person, I worked with the district. I was part of the district leadership team in that role. I helped facilitate committees with elementary school teachers to try to get, for example, writing expectations to be consistent at each grade level. But it wasn't until I was really in this role that I was able to make big changes in that area. And as I mentioned, with our math implementation, what we realized with our assessment calendar and our assessment expectations this year, where we're, we're saying, "These are the common unit assessments for every math unit, there are six of them. And then here's the window to take that. And we know your students might not be ready, and that's okay for now, but next year we're gonna expect them to be ready, and we want to see how they do this year, and we want you to be on track with the curriculum." We were finding that teachers weren't used to that because they'd been going at their own pace, and they were only getting through a third of the curriculum. So if you do the math on that, okay, so if they're kindergarten, grade one, grade two, grade three, they're only getting through a third of the curriculum, after three years they're losing a full year, or actually after two years, they're losing a full year and a half of learning. What we've seen this year with the assessment calendar and the support that our directors of curriculum can provide is that the teachers feel supported at increasing their pace and still engaging students to make sure that they're learning what they need to learn. And so that acceleration of learning, I'm really proud of, and I've helped to put that into place, and that's work I started way back at jury. Obviously, the early college, I know you've heard me talk about it many times, but I can't overstate how important the early college program is to the North Adams Public Schools and to Berkshire County. And we are on the precipice of receiving an innovation pathway for health sciences and social assistance. So we'll be one of the few schools in the state that has an early college program and an innovation program, which provides internship, hundred-hour internships, plus two technical courses and two advanced courses in the health sciences to our students. I initiated all of those things and helped to get those things off the ground and make them what they are today, and I'm extremely proud of that. I mentioned special education. I work with Tom Simon regularly, like we collaborate on a lot of things. But special education, not just in North Adams, across the country, has been separate, and there's a lot of reasons for that. I was talking to Sharon Head who taught, she was part of the MCLA Education Department, and she left a year and a half ago or so. And I was asking her about like, "Why is there such a disconnect? Why is special education not supporting general education in a way that's really integrated?" And it's constantly confusing for everybody involved, like what are we really supposed to be doing, and how do we measure it, and how do we know if it's working? That's a constant challenge with special education. And her perspective was, that's because the special education laws to this day are written such that the expectation is that special education's provided in a separate environment. It was never intended to be through inclusionary practices. But as we've evolved, we've wanted it to be through inclusionary practices, but that's why the laws and regulations don't really make sense, and that's why everyone's like, "I don't really know how to do it," because it's not clearly defined. So I'd really like to see some more integration and stability. And then the next phase two is, we've done it for math. Literacy, we have Kim Chapel who's fantastic, she's a regional expert on early childhood literacy and adolescent literacy too, for that matter. But we haven't really been able to crack that nut of how we get the majority of our students to be on grade level for reading. Even with the interventions we're providing, we feel like we're just keeping their heads above water. So the gaps are so significant. We saw in our kindergartners this year are 13 points below where kindergartners were last year coming in. So like our literacy, our vocabulary gaps coming in are so severe. How do we not just keep our heads above water with that, but how do we really accelerate? So the majority of our students are reading on grade level by grade three. And so we have attended the Instructional Prioritization Institute with the leadership team, and we've shifted, we've shifted, we've added to our focus of math as an instructional priority to literacy and specifically about vocabulary acquisition and fluency, and we're building some strategic measures in place to make sure that we're, we're keeping our eyes on that prize and getting better at it next year.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. And thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to ask.
Any questions for my colleagues across the room? I'll start. I'm looking at your toy stick because I'm gonna go to this.
I think I'm, you're gonna have a period afterwards where we can, yeah, thank you.
Any one from this side of the room? Okay, hearing done. Dr. Callahan, would you like to make some closing remarks in five minutes or less?
Absolutely. As you can tell, I can talk about this stuff all night. I really, I love what I do.
Five minutes or less.
Appreciate the time, hold me to it. I love what I do. I love the way we are able to be creative and supported by the community in this district. I don't ever want to leave, even though sometimes I apply elsewhere because my contract is aspiring in June and I don't have a contract. So that's real life, but I hope we're heading in the right direction tonight. I would just like to say that the work I've dedicated my life to is so important to me and I believe so important to North Adams and to all of you, and I'm just so excited to have this opportunity, and I thank you for this.
Thank you. Anything else?
I feel like I'm No, it's okay. I've settled out.
Okay. So with that, I will turn it over to the school committee. I'll ask you to speak when you're called upon, just to keep us organized because I know we're all excited tonight. Any closing comments, thoughts? I'll start with this side of the room. Anyone? Okay, I'll go to that side of the room.
I'll go to you.
Dick, we're looking at you now.
Tim, I first met you, I believe, when I was mayor and watched you move upward in the system from teacher to your current role as assistant superintendent. And from all I've witnessed and from all I've heard, you have grown and provided significant contributions to the district in every role in which you have served. And since coming back to the school committee, I have continued to be both impressed and thankful for the work that you do for the students of the district. Your academic knowledge is equaled by your true understanding of the needs of the district and the students. You are truly a kids-first guy, and I've felt that ever since I've known you. You along with the superintendent, other administrators have put in place educational platforms and supports for all students. Without exact numbers, I'm probably pretty close when I say that 60% of our students graduate, students of our graduates go into college, which is a goal for the school and many of our students. We also know that 40% don't go into college, and we've spoken about that a lot. So much has been put in place to help our kids academically, to prepare for, prepare them for college. Additionally, so much has also been done to help our non-college-bound students. I know that non-college-bound students receive career counseling supports that will help them as they exit the building into employment, and I know there are other off, some other offerings within the curriculum that provide additional vocational exposures. That all said, and I'll be done in a minute. That all said, over time and through your actions, you have assured me, this committee, and our North Adams Public Schools community that you're vigilant and steadfast for the 40%, whom I deeply care for. I'm confident that you will continue to build services and resources for them to encourage vocational options and internships and provide the best academic and practical supports that will give them every advantage to help them be productive and successful. You have been, and I know you will continue to be, the hope, the promise, the champion for success for every student in the North Adams Public Schools. And I'm happy to be here tonight, your son gave me a closing line. And I'm happy to be here tonight to see you continue to finish what you have started, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Dick. Anyone else?
Go ahead, Alyssa.
Definitely not gonna be as eloquent as Dick, but, you know, I, I've worked in higher education for a long time, and one thing that we see is that passionate, students come from passionate educators. They're with people who are passionate about the work that they do, but also passionate about pushing them forward and helping them succeed. And I think in my time working with you, in the answers to your questions, that really came through, was that you have a passion for helping students not just as like an educator, but as a mentor, as someone who can be there to, to push them forward. And I think, you know, all of us on the school committee are very focused on that student success, and it's very clear that you are as well. So I think that you definitely fit the mold of what I've seen to be successful educators that create successful students going off to college. And as Dick said too, I think it's really great that you care equally as much about the students who are not college-bound and understand that that, college isn't always the right path, and it is important to also provide for those students and create passionate people who are going to the workforce or whatever it might be that they choose to do. So that was just something I wanted to say.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alyssa. Tara? Anyone? So I would just like to add, I remember when we, when I first became mayor, Dr. Melkis was very clear in saying this would be her last contract. And over the last three, three and a half years, I've always had in the back of my mind, and I think, Dick, you said it the best, that this is the most important hire a mayor could ever make. And as we navigated this process, I was so focused on, and we wanted to be transparent, that we wanted to find the best person. And I even had my assistant write out all the names on the resumes so I could kind of like be objective and not be focused on my internal person. And what I found was, despite all of that and trying to be neutral, kick, neutral to this process, that even from a group of people who don't work with you every single day, your resume, your credentials, your work style, your work ethic rose so far above any of the candidates. They were all wonderful candidates, but we have something really good here in Dr. Callahan. And I think all in our gut, we felt that, but we felt an obligation to do this search and see, to ensure or reinforce. But Tim, you have dedicated your service, just like I have, to the city of North Adams, and it's so important that we set an example for our staff that there is advancement in municipal work, and there is advancement in education. So with that, I will entertain a motion to enter into contract negotiations for Tim Callahan to be the next superintendent for the North Adams Public Schools.
So moved.
A second, please?
Second.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? We're gonna give Alyssa the second. Any further discussion from anyone? With that, this will be a roll call vote. Welcome, Ray.
With great pleasure and confidence, yes.
Do we get Cody?
No.
No. Donnis?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Sukie?
Hundred percent in.
Tom Quetz?
Yes.
And Maxi, yes. Tim, I'll see you tomorrow morning to suit negotiations.
Thank you so much.
And good hands. Do we still have to adjourn? Yes, we certainly do. So with that, thank you all. Thank you to everyone in the gallery that came to join us. Thank you for anyone online. A big thank you to Pete Gentile who came out tonight to have this broadcast. Thank you, Pete. We see you behind our hidden door. So lots of exciting things happening for us. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We will do a roll call just in case Cody is out there and we don't see him.
I'll make the motion.
Oh, sorry, see, I get it.
And I'll second.
Okay. Do you want to discuss it?
No.
Yes, let's discuss it for 10 minutes.
You know, hi, Mommy. Welcome, Ray.
I just have a few more, no. Yes, thank you.
Okay, Chamberlain?
No, Chamberlain.
Daunis?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Sukie?
Yep.
Tom Quetz?
Yes.
Maxi, yes. Thank you all so much, and thank you, Dr. Callahan.
Thank you, Mayor.